Welcome, everybody, to tonight's City of Tumwater Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, September 26, 2023. The meeting is called to order. I'll do roll call. Commissioner Edwards.
Here.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Commissioner Schumacher is excused, and Vice Chair Sullivan is excused. Commissioner Tobias.
Here.
Great. Commissioner Varela is excused, but might be joining us later. We were expecting Commissioner Von Holtz, but she's not here yet. And me, Commissioner Robbins. We do not have a quorum yet. So the changes to the agenda will be, we'll just move right to, we'll skip item four, which is our only action item for tonight, and just move to five and go beyond and go on until we move through the rest of the agenda. We may just have to move those, approval of those minutes to a future meeting. Okay. Everybody's okay about that? Let's go to commissioners' reports. Do anybody want to?
He does join us.
Oh, great, great. Kelly is... Commissioner Von Holtz is joining us, so I may have to resend everything I just... If she's able to join in. Commissioner Von Holtz, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, great, great. Glad you're here because you make the quorum.
Yay!
All right, so let's go back to our regularly scheduled, our posted agenda. We don't have to skip the action item, so we'll just go to approval of the minutes from August 22, 2023. Discussion, comments, revisions, motions.
Who approved the minutes?
That was Commissioner Kirkpatrick to approve.
Oh, second.
That was Commissioner Edwards. Great, thanks. Last call for any comments or revisions. All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes for August 22, 2023. All in favor, please say aye.
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 opposed. Great, minutes are approved. Thank you, everybody. Let's go to the commissioners' reports. Anybody have anything you'd like to mention? Yes, Commissioner Tobias.
I mentioned it earlier, but for the record, I will not be available on the October 10, for the October 10 meeting. Best excuse.
Mr. Edwards likewise. Great. Brad, would you like to give us our managers' report?
Let's see, a couple things. We, the Ylander and Interface Code adoption by the state has been postponed until March of next year, along with the other related building code things. We are in the process of working with the Association of Washington Cities to have a letter come out under AWC's letterhead requesting that the Building Code Council take a look at some very specific issues and clarifications to make in the code before it moves forward with adopting them. So we're hopeful that will, the letter will go out probably this week or early next week. Once that does, I'll share that with you. We are still in the process of working on our Habitat Conservation Plan with the service. It's going to take a little bit longer than we had hoped, but we have some larger, bigger issues that we're dealing with before we can move forward. So we've got a lot of internal meetings before we can propose some solutions there. Lastly, the comprehensive plan update process is, as you're aware, underway. We're meeting number five or six now on this. We will be having, we'll be sending out schedules hopefully soon for our public open houses and so forth for the fall, and our survey and other things. We're working on those right now. And we had a good meeting with our staff, the city staff, on the whole update, because it will be encompassing all the other departments besides community development in order to make sure everything is updated. So we've got a bit of coordinating ahead of us, but we've got, nobody has run away from us yet. So we did lock the door. But it was successful meeting them.
Good, thank you. Kind of a quick question on the urban wildlands interface MOU. Does that mean with the postponement that things don't go into effect until then or until?
Correct. So this is the second postponement, and they've also, the stated reason was the energy code. The State Building Code Council voted last Friday to postpone until March, middle of March, I believe. So we're hoping that some of these things will be cleared up before they formally go ahead.
Very good. Thanks for that clarification. Any other questions for Brad? Right. Let's move to public comment, and I see that we have someone from Jolt News. Not sure who. Would, the person representing Jolt News, would you please state your name and if you'd like to address the commission tonight on general matters?
Able to unmute.
Unmuted. If you'd like to address the commission tonight, please state your name and tell us what you think. I'm assuming, I'm assuming not. Okay. Glad you're, glad you're here representing Jolt. It's always good to have that coverage. All right, let's go to our eighth order of business, which is our 2025 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update Discussion, the housing element. And tonight, we have our guest, Orin Hodgson. Hope I'm saying your name right. And welcome. Brad, do you want to say any remarks first?
Yeah, just a reminder to the commissioners, this is the second session we've had on the housing element, and we introduced the housing element essentially last month. This month is, Laura, if you could walk us through, first of all, the larger issue of the housing element updates, what we need to be accomplishing, but also some of the state law changes that really affect what we need to do. So, and we've encouraged the commission to ask questions as needed. So Laura, do you want to provide further? I've got like your time that you spent in the Secret Service and all that that I could talk about, but if you want to introduce yourself, that would be good.
Sure. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Hello, everyone. My name is Laura Hodgson. I have been at Commerce for almost four years now. Prior to that, I've been doing urban planning for 14 or 15 years. And so I started here working on the Housing Action Plan Grants, and then transitioned into working on the Housing Element Update Guidance that I'll be talking to you about today. And I'm excited to share that with you. We have a lot of resources available, but we realize that there's a lot of complexities to, maybe not complexities is the right word, but a lot of additional nuances to the legislation that were added to the housing element. So I'm here to talk about what the new legislation requires, what our guidance recommends, and then provide a few examples of what we've seen jurisdictions do so far, with the understanding that many jurisdictions are actively working on this right now. So we don't have many examples to show you, but we do have a few that I can speak to. And as more come in, we're happy to come back and share additional examples or best practices as they come in. With that, go ahead and begin here. I think all of you know Commerce through the lens of growth management planning, but before we begin, I just wanted to share that we touch all areas of strengthening communities, from small business assistance and energy to community services and economic development. So those may or may not overlap with your role in the Planning Commission, but it's helpful to know that we do play this role in strengthening communities outside of the Growth Management Act. Today, as I mentioned, I would like to go over what the new requirements for the housing element are as determined by the state legislature in 2021 under Hospital 1220, then share what our guidance recommends for some of the key pieces of that work, which include the land capacity analysis, the adequate provisions section of the work, and the racially, what we call the racially disparate impacts portion of the, of the housing element work. And then I'll close with an overview of what the latest housing regulation and development code changes are that the legislature passed over the past few years, for you to have that information as you understand what other changes need to happen from regulatory perspective moving forward. So in 2021, the legislature adopted Hospital 1220. It changed the GMA goal from encourage the availability of affordable housing to plan for and accommodate housing affordable to all economic segments. And with that, they intended for the local governments to play a larger role in planning for housing in their communities. And in doing so, they wanted to specify what those, that more involved role of planning would entail. With that, that included the Department of Commerce Authority for the Department of Commerce, or direction for the Department of Commerce to provide projected housing needs to local governments, and these would be broken down by income bracket based on area median income. And it would also include a breakdown of permanent supportive housing, emergency housing, and emergency shelter needs. And these are things that local governments haven't traditionally been planning for, so we are eager to provide support and bridge the communications between planning for these housing types and planning for the traditional housing types that we plan for as land use planners. Then for local governments, the requirements are now to identify local housing needs, and jurisdictions always had to do that, but now they need to do that based on the Commerce's numbers. And those are developed at a countywide level, because that's the way that projections for population are provided. And we also know that counties have the best understanding of where their local growth should go. So we provide them at a countywide level, and then local governments, counties in coordination with their cities, decide where that growth goes. And they, and they detail that in their comprehensive plans. Next jurisdictions have to identify sufficient land capacity for all their housing needs. Again, this was already in the housing element requirements, but now jurisdictions need to take into account those housing needs by income bracket, which means they need to take into account affordability. What can people afford in their jurisdiction when it comes to land and a home in their jurisdiction? The third bullet here, document barriers to housing availability and actions needed to address those needs. This was bolstered, and jurisdictions now need to document those barriers. Before this, this requirement was make adequate provisions. And I have a feeling that it was kind of, because it was so vague, many people didn't do much about it. Now the text in here primarily says to document barriers to housing availability, and then detail actions needed to address those needs. Then the last two, we kind of, for the purposes of expediency, I'm grouping together, but they are to identify local policies and regulations that result in racially disparate impacts, displacement and exclusion in housing, and begin to undo them, and identify areas at risk of displacement and establish anti-displacement policies. In sum, this means look at where our policies and regulations in the past have led to disparate impacts, which means people not having an equal footing in terms of access to housing in our jurisdictions across the state, and working to create a more level playing fields that people can have access to housing throughout their communities, and to areas of opportunity throughout their jurisdiction, not just in pockets where they've probably been segregated, whether intentionally or not intentionally, based on land use practices. And then making sure that when people are located in their housing, that they're not being pushed out of their housing based on new development that's coming, or that we're sensitively addressing that and encouraging as little displacement as possible when we have new investment coming into our communities. So what that looks like is first identifying, oh, sorry, didn't realize what the next slide was. So essentially, this looks like breaking the housing element down into five pieces. Identifying your housing needs and what they are based on those countywide numbers, identifying the land capacity, identifying those barriers and documenting those programs, identifying if there's racially disparate impacts and areas at risk of displacement, and then updating your policies and regulations based on the findings from all of these pieces. And I would note that the first bullet here also includes doing a housing needs analysis to understand really what the housing needs are in your community from an understanding of how many housing units are in a community, what age they are, who they serve, what incomes they serve, and things like that. And we've developed guidance for each of these pieces, as you see here on the right in purple. And we've kind of grouped them into three different guidance documents, because it was a lot of new material. We wanted to be able to not have a 200-page document for you to go to. So we have a webinar and a guidance document on each of these things, and I can point you directly where you need to go if you have questions. But the quick version of it is that the first part of the work involves identifying your housing needs as they come from the Department of Commerce. And you'll enter your, work with your county based on the population projection that the county and the cities feels appropriate, and determine your housing needs for the county, broken down by income bracket, and then divide those up. Then we have a tool that helps jurisdictions make those decisions about where they, where they, how they want to divide up those numbers. I'm happy to talk to you more about that if you have more questions on that as you go through that process with your, with the county. Once you identify what your housing needs are for your community, the next step is to make sure that you have enough land capacity for those housing needs. And what that means is understanding how much, what type of housing can be built that can be affordable to those various income housing needs. So, for example, I'd like to explain it as, in many cases, if you were to go to a community and look at a quarter or half acre lot, single family home, if you think about what, who could afford that home and what income need that would meet, it would probably not be anybody who's earning less than 100% of the area median income, because land is expensive or housing prices have gone crazy. And unfortunately, that means that half or more of our residents cannot afford that home. So what we want to try to do here is make sure that we are planning for the type of housing that could be built, and what it could afford, what, who could afford it, with the understanding that this will also mean a lot of subsidies need to be provided to meet some of the lower income housing needs. And it sounds like there's a question, and I'm happy to stop here and take that.
Oh, I don't think so.
Oh, sorry. I thought I saw the little blip. So what this means, the jurisdictions should provide a table of their housing needs as they determine based on their countywide discussions, show there's enough capacity for each of those housing needs by income. And if there's insufficient housing capacity for any income need, then they'll, they'll need to adjust their zoning to provide that capacity prior to or with the adoption of their comprehensive plan. And what we think this means is because a lot of our housing has not typically been as diverse and as affordable as many people need, especially with housing prices going, getting so high in the past few years, that jurisdictions will probably need to have more capacity for the lower income housing needs, which means that we need, they may need to add land zone for mid-rise housing types or more moderate density housing types, such as small-scale multifamily, so duplexes, triplexes, courtyard apartments, or small-scale multifamily, such as two or three-story walk-up apartments, and possibly even four or five-story mid-rise apartment buildings, because per unit, those prices are probably going to be lower than a mortgage on a $600,000 or $400,000 home. But we do recognize that just having the land capacity for these housing types does not mean it will be built. So please keep that in mind as you, as you go through this exercise of understanding, providing the zoning to allow more affordable housing types is not the only piece of this puzzle. But it's the piece of the puzzle that local governments have control over. They don't have control over everything. As jurisdictions do that, they'll also need to plan for infrastructure, because there will be places where additional capital facilities will be needed to support those that added density and those additional housing units. The last piece of this puzzle, Tumwater is already done. It's already zoned for regulations to allow emergency housing and shelters, transitional housing, permanent supportive housing. So congratulations on that. That is an important piece of the puzzle, and sometimes a very hard one. So congratulate you on having done that already. So what does this look like? We've only received one very preliminary draft of a jurisdiction completing this land capacity work, and that is Redmond. King County has also completed theirs, although they have not submitted it to us. And based on their zoning, it showed that they had insufficient capacity to meet their total housing needs. They had about 40% of their units in five to 20-unit buildings, 41% in detached, single-family, and the remainder in duplexes or mobile homes. But to make up that additional capacity, which, that need, which was primarily at the lower income housing levels, they decided, they needed to increase capacity, and they chose to do so, are choosing to do so, and they're over lake center near transit. And they will also, at the same time, adjust their regulations for emergency housing and shelters to show that they have enough capacity for that. But they do recognize in their, in their draft plan that it will require significant subsidies, and that's going to be the case across the board. So to achieve this additional capacity that they need, they took a number of steps, such as consolidating their low-rise, their very low-density, single-family zones into a neighborhood residential zone. They consolidated their multifamily zones and were allowing up to roughly 30 units per acre. They converted some of their, or allowed some capacity in their commercial zones, whereas currently big box zones. So they did a number of things here. I'm not going to walk through all of them, but these are exactly the things that we were anticipating jurisdictions would need to make. And, but it may not be exactly this in every jurisdiction. So if you're a visual person, this is what it looks like. One of the notes here is that they are looking at inclusionary zoning and their multifamily tax exemption program as being key tools to being able to reach some of those lower affordability levels, with the understanding that MFTE can provide housing units in the 51% to 80% AMI range, and possibly lower, and inclusionary zoning, the same thing. Again, to really meet those housing needs at the 0% to 50% level, we recognize that at the state level that that's going to take significant subsidies, which aren't always available from local governments. And so that means, is going to mean a lot of federal and state subsidies to meet those housing needs. But we do need to be able to provide a framework for that housing to be built. The next piece of the puzzle is, after we've made sure that we have the zoning to allow more affordable housing, is checking if there are any barriers to affordable housing being built within the framework of the regulatory environment that we have that allows housing. And under adequate provisions, there's a few other components, but this is the main piece of it. And what we recommend jurisdictions do to meet the intent of this statute is to review their housing production trends and see if there's any place where they're not keeping up with the number of units that would need to be built each year to meet needs. And if not, there may be a barrier in your regulations and policies, and this would be the time to review your regulations and policies to see what those barriers are. The statute also asks jurisdictions to develop a list of actions to overcome those barriers identified, and this might be somewhere, someplace where you use your app strategies that you developed, I think, two years ago, to incorporate into your comprehensive plan, because you probably have already done some of this work, which is always a great thing to hear. And to help jurisdictions do this work, we've provided a Word document that walks jurisdictions through some of the likely barriers to providing or allowing more affordable housing, so they can walk through and say, is this a barrier? And if so, what can we do to maybe adjust our development regulations to allow more affordable housing because of this one barrier? And if it's not a barrier, then that's great, and keep at, working to eliminate those barriers, because we realize that it's a combination of zoning and those other regulations that are preventing housing, in addition to those things which we, which local governments don't have control over. But this, these are things they do. So what did that look like for Redmond when they did this work? They documented their barriers, the programs and actions they needed to meet their goals in their housing element and their housing action plan, particularly most of their actions that they determined were needed were documented in their housing action plan. And it would have been really great to see those included in their housing element, because their housing action plan was most likely adopted by resolution and not by ordinance. So it carries more weight within when it's included in their housing element. What they found was some of the biggest barriers were coordinating land use and zoning changes to increase capacity, streamlining permitting, reducing parking requirements, and revising design standards. And then that piece that I mentioned before, revising their mandatory inclusionary zoning and voluntary MFTE for units at deeper affordability levels. We do recognize, or I recognize that inclusionary zoning, even though I think Tumwater has something on the books, is, is a tool that doesn't, is not going to always be successful in every environment. But it is a tool to, to evaluate if it is something that you are, the jurisdiction is willing to do and the market can bear. And of course, the funding limitations. And from their perspective, they recognized that there were some local levies that may be an option, but they were also going to focus on advocacy, because they felt that there's a lot more funding available from the regional, state, and federal levels, and they have the capacity to do that. So the next piece of the housing element is to address this equity piece that is new and kind of works to undo some of the patterns in land use practice, whether intentional or not, that have led to disparate impacts in housing. For example, our black homeownership study showed that blacks are, homeownership rates are 19% lower than those of whites. And it's those types of practices, because of redlining and exclusionary zoning, that this piece of the statute is asking jurisdictions to look at. Let's say, let's allow, let's create fewer barriers to everybody having housing. And to achieve that, we feel like one of the recommended ways to do so is to go through this process where you first engage your community who may be, may have been dispartly impacted, understand who lives in your jurisdiction, and where those disparities may be, evaluate your policies and see what may or may not have led to those disparate impacts, then revise your policies, and then review and update your regulations to be consistent with those policies. When, when we talk about reviewing those policies, that can be what, reviewing for language, coded language, that could be reviewing for exclusionary policies, there could be places where jurisdictions were promoting housing that is only affordable to residents who earn a certain amount, and thereby, based on the data within their jurisdiction, excluding other, other residents, including those of other races, or it could be something else. And then, once you review those policies, taking the next steps of identifying what strategies you might be able to do to marry with those policies, to make those changes and begin to undo them. And this is one piece of the housing element that actually steps outside of the housing element and asks jurisdictions to look at what these strategies are. And I have a feeling that Tumwater has done a lot of these already, but if they want, identify that there's still racially disparate impacts in their jurisdiction, exclusion, or displacement, or the, or the, or displacement risk, these policies, whether they've done them or not, strengthening ones that they may have done, or adding ones that strengthening ones that they may have done or adding ones that they may, you may not have on the books, could help to create a more equitable housing environment in Tom Water.
Let me interrupt you just a moment. Commissioner Tobias has a
Yes, on that last slide, generating revenue from affordable housing, one of the items mentioned is REIT one or two. What is the difference between a REIT one and a REIT two? Is that a real estate equity trust or?
It's a real estate excise tax. One is on, there are two different levels of I apologize. I would have to look up the details of that. I get confused between the few different taxes, but it is spelled out in our guidance and I'm happy to get back to you with that answer. My apologies.
That's fine. That's okay. I was just curious what, I just wanted to know what REIT was.
Yes, yeah, sorry. Real estate excise tax. It typically is a tax on the purchase or sale of housing. And the, it's a quarter of a percent and it goes to an affordable housing fund, funds specifically for housing below eighty percent A M I. In general, that's what it is.
So property taxes are recurring tax based on the value of your property, whereas the excise tax is based on the, the sale or purchase of a home.
Yes, that's my understanding, but again, I would have to double check in the guidance. Yeah.
No problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions before I move on?
Please continue.
Okay. So again, this is a new piece of what planners have looked at from before and with regard to housing policy. So we don't have a lot of examples right now. Luckily, we do have some jurisdictions who have done this work based on a middle housing grant that they were afforded the opportunity last biennium or just the Central Peterstown region jurisdictions. And based on that work, this is the example that I was able to pull out for you and we'll be posting a few other examples. Other than that, jurisdictions are still trying to understand what this means. But we, we recommend jurisdictions doing is that key evaluation point. A, understanding who's in your community, do you have those racial disparate impacts, but then whether or not you have them evaluating your policies for perpetuating those impacts and perpetuating exclusion or displacement impacts. So this jurisdiction in, in call evaluated each of their goals and policies for the possible impact and then detailed what that reason was and they were then, will then be able to use this to revise the text to their policies, which will then create the platform for them to, over the next ten or twenty years, implement regulations and zoning changes that will begin to change the trajectory of those disparate impacts. They also evaluated the likely factors that contributed to them. And, and again, these are things that don't just happen in a jurisdiction in a silo. These are things that happen because of national and regional and systemic policies. But there could be things that could be done at a local level to undo them based on the way we've regulated zoning and housing in the past. And therefore, it's important to look at now. They found that local policies and regulations may have contributed to those racially disparate impacts and exclusion they saw in their community based on the single family zoning with large lot sizes and the zoning that limits more affordable housing types. So segregating those more affordable housing types to a few areas in some ways had disparate impacts on those of certain races and, and for some, and I think one thing to keep in mind is extending this beyond just race to disparate impacts of anybody is, it could be helpful. And they realized that many of these impacts could be mitigated by creating a wider variety of housing types throughout the city and increasing the availability of affordable housing. So in their policies and in their comprehensive plan, I expect that they will probably be adding a variety of housing types in a wider range throughout their jurisdiction to implement these policy and change these policies that had been on the books. All right. Last but not least, I'm sorry, I'm gonna try to zoom through this because I think I've been taking more than my allotted time and I apologize for that. We, there have been a lot of changes to the regulations on what jurisdictions must do specifically in the regulations outside of their comprehensive plan. We have a twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three housing laws document that is available to walk through what those laws are specifically for housing. And we will be updating our regulation checklist that can be used to review what regulations need to be changed on the ground. But just in the past year or two, the changes include the following on this page and the next page. The primary one is going to be allowing two ADUs on all lots that allow single family homes and U G As. This was a result of Bill thirteen thirty-seven. Those, there's a number of pieces to that, including allowing purchase of those homes and reduce parking in some areas and allowing up to thousand square foot unit. So those are some things to keep in mind that will allow, add additional capacity and affordability within your jurisdiction. And then where applicable, regulations will also need to allow middle housing. And since Tom Waters is a city over twenty-five thousand, I'm pretty sure that applies to you. I haven't come back and checked the, the list. There are a few other pieces, including allowing density increases in a number of areas, for example, existing buildings that convert to multifamily, affordable housing on properties owned by religious organizations. There'll be I think those others were kind of covered. Let's see here, what's the next page? Parking regulations will need to be updated in some cases. They'll need to allow unit lot short subdivisions if you don't already do that. Impact fees will also need to be adjusted. This was one that was kind of snuck into a bill that was not widely recognized bill for housing. So impact fees must be proportional to the impact of the unit and there must be reduced impact fees for ADUs. And then there was also a few requirements about design standards that needing, needing to be clear and objective. Administrative review for middle housing and that for ADUs, the restrictions may not be more restrictive than the principal unit. Again, we're actively working on a checklist to incorporate the changes from the twenty twenty-three session. Our checklist does include any regulations that were passed by honor before twenty twenty-two. So check our resources here for more information. Again, we have our main housing webpage. We have our housing element webpage, which has all of the guidance documents that I was referring to today, earlier today, and our periodic webpage with information on those checklists for completing the housing element update and regulation updates. And of course, I'm available for any assistance as well as a team of housing professionals in our housing unit. So thank you for having me today and happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. Very thorough, kind of a, kind of a whirlwind, actually.
Yes, sorry.
No, it's, that's really good. Let's see, let's go to any questions or comments that folks have. Mr. Tobias.
So in looking at, it's one of the examples we got from the guidance for updating your housing element. But noted the housing needs assessment and that look, you know, your, your presentation looks a lot at the broader market availability, land use. Should the housing element speak to what counts as a house or a home in, in our case? And would that vary region to region? So for example, in a, in a city like Seattle where you have, you know, studios and micro studios where it's you know, very like small, compact, you know, like a, a single purpose room, like a three quarters bath and, you know, what else needs to go in to be considered a home? Versus in, you know, a city like Tom Water where it's a little more spread out, we don't really have it. I mean, we do have studios, but not we don't have the same size constraints that like a major dense city area would have. Do we want to like voice that in, when drafting a housing element of how do we define what counts as a house?
You can. I think some of that information will be important information to include in the background information about what the environment is currently within the housing market in Tom Water, which, which is typically what is included in the first port, portion of a housing element. That's also really important information that goes into the housing needs analysis that informs basically write some of that information for the housing element. From a numbers perspective, that's kind of already been taken into account with our housing projections. We take the countywide household size number and use that moving forward with the understanding that your local knowledge can help to inform how that plays out in terms of what will be needed in, in your local city. So for example, if you had, like, for example, if you were a, you had a university in your jurisdiction, which I don't think is the case in Tom Water, you might plan for and encourage a lot more of those, you know, studio or one bedroom units and, and implement a policy or regulation to encourage those in some places. And it went away more than a jurisdiction where, where they had a lot of families or something like that.
That, that would be an area of concern is what happens if we, you know, create, encourage, accommodate affordable housing of, you know, to say, oh, this studio, this one bedroom is an affordable option, but the people who need it is, say, a family of three, a family of four. You know, then it doesn't matter as much that it's affordable because it doesn't accommodate the whole household size.
Yeah, and a lot of jurisdiction, or not a lot, in some jurisdictions, they actually put policies in place to encourage when they have affordable housing, that a certain portion of those are built to meet what housing needs are not being served in their jurisdiction. For example, I come from Montgomery County, Maryland, and there's a requirement that a certain proportion of units be two or three bedroom or encourages a certain number of units to be two or three bedroom for those units, particularly of the section of units that are required to be affordable in a property. So that could be something you can do within the levers and what makes sense to do within encouraging the market in your jurisdiction. With the understanding that you don't want to do anything that would also, you know, discourage development from coming.
But that is acceptable and encouraged to include details like that when creating a housing element plan.
I think that's something that could influence your policies and then based on the policies would then flow to regulations later on, based on what you find from your community.
Thank you.
Mr. Kirkpatrick.
I, I don't know really how to phrase the question, but it, it looks like if we find a barrier and we have to pass an ordinance to eliminate that barrier, that we have to have that process completed before we complete the update of the element. That's sort of the horse before the cart, it sounds like.
You bring up a very good point, which I neglected to read in my notes was that jurisdictions are required to have the zoning to provide the land capacity by the end of the periodic update. And they have to have a plan of actions to remove those barriers, but they don't have to do those actions by the end of the periodic update. We recognize that those actions will take time to do. And there is, in a way, not really a deadline for doing them in statute. Other than the more barriers you remove within your jurisdiction, hopefully the more affordable housing, you know, the better you can meet your, your local housing needs. So for the actions to remove those barriers, they don't have to be done by the end of the housing element update. You just have to have a plan to do them.
Around more questions. I, I wonder if you could speak to examples whether in Washington, whether even elsewhere in the U S or elsewhere around the world where there are perhaps more, I'll call them more holistic approaches to this question. For, for me, affordability is more than just the cost of the house itself or the, or the dwelling itself. It's where it is, how easy it is to access jobs or medical care, school or whatever. You know, how near it is to all those other services and opportunities for people. And, and so I'm wondering if you have our know of examples where there is that more interconnected or holistic approach.
I think there's a lot of places that have that interconnected approach and I think I apologize for, in the interest of keeping this higher level, I didn't mention one piece that of the statute that they do recommend jurisdictions do, which is look at the relationship of where housing is in relation to transportation and jobs. So by doing so, and what's been one of the things that we have encouraged for a while is that we recommend that jurisdictions not only plan for their allocations of housing need that come from the county and particularly those more affordable housing units going to areas where there are transportation and services, we recommend that jurisdictions plan within their jurisdiction for more of their housing in areas where there are, there's transportation and services because we recognize that affordability guess goes way beyond housing. And one of the second biggest pieces of affordability for individuals is transportation. So locating your higher density housing and more affordable housing types near transit and transportation and jobs and services is a, is a key component of affordability and something that is a tenant of the growth management act and a key piece of planning that we strongly recommend. Outside of those locations, we, you know, there are other pieces, I think, to affordability that we can't touch as planners. For example, medical care, it's getting very expensive. But from a location perspective, the something that we can do and something we recommend in, in our guidance and through the G M A. But I think there's lots of examples of, of places. I'm happy to send you a few examples if, if that would be helpful for you after this.
I think it would be, you know, I, I see things from some European countries where I'm sure they haven't solved the problem altogether, but you know, there might be some interesting things for us to learn about. And you know, how, how they went about it, what were the, what were the results of, of their attempts? And maybe it kind of comes down to and goes, and goes back to that finer grained understanding with the data of what our actual needs are versus what, you know, what assets we have, where are the job centers, what, what kind of situations have we got compared to what the, what the, really the finer grained understanding of the needs, the actual needs. But kind of like what Commissioner Tobias was talking about, what, what, what population people, what are we trying to serve? What are their needs?
Yeah, I think from the European perspective, a lot of it is the land use controls, the the transportation, they have incredible transit, which allows them to locate their housing and reduce costs. And they also have significant government subsidies, which we don't have. So those three pieces, one of which we are encouraging to do through the land use perspective. One we are trying to do with transit, but it's enormously expensive. And the government subsidies is to be seen.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious about what happens if funding isn't available. So I know that there are lots of different sources of funding to go to and things like that, but you know, sometimes you just don't know or, and so what happens if we, there's like this nice plan that's created and everything and then they don't get that, that funding source. So there are different things that they can do about that and ways to work around that or?
For affordable housing developers specifically, or the jurisdiction that's is trying to meet their housing needs?
Uh, the jurisdiction trying to meet the housing need.
Yeah, that's, that's a hard one, um, they, there are a few tools that local governments have to support affordable housing, and outside of that, they do have a lot of levers with regards to regulations and incentives. So the, I think the, the focus outside of that would be focusing on the, the regulations and incentives that they have, and also being creative, meeting with affordable housing developers and seeing, how can we meet with you to move the needle on affordable housing, given that we don't, we have limited funding sources? For example, um, multifamily tax exemption is one of the biggest tools that local governments use to, uh, move the needle in terms of providing affordable housing. But there's also clever ways of doing things, like BIRI, and they recently did an affordable housing demonstration project, and they allow up to five, and based, and with that, they allow significant waivers from the development regulations in exchange for affordability. And in doing so, they were able to get three different projects of anywhere from twenty to a hundred sixty units of very affordable housing that they would not have been able to do otherwise. So trying to think what is outside the, the box that, that you, within the framework that, of course, you're working within, that you can do to encourage that. Um, Port Townsend has, um, worked with their building officials to allow mobile homes on wheels. One of the only jurisdictions in the state that allows it, uh, outside of, um, uh, mobile home parks. So there are, I think, creative ways to do it if there aren't funding available outside of the funding tools that are locally available.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, um, put you on the spot, Commissioner Von Halt, but do you have any questions? Don't wanna, I don't wanna overlook you since you're online.
Um, I don't really have a que- any questions. I have sort of a concern when we're thinking about affordable housing, um, and you talk about mobile homes on wheels and things like in, you know, ADUs, and I know it's affordable, and I know that someone experiencing houselessness will be grateful, um, for a place to live, but I just wonder, I just worry that affordable housing, when we're making these decisions, we're, we're, um, we're just, we're putting people in a position where that's all that's going to be available for them. So I just, I worry about very low income people being forced to live in mobile homes without, wi- with wills and those kinds of things, um, just because we don't have any other options.
Yeah, it's, it's a hard situation between funding and providing, but yeah, I understand. And those are things that you can make local policies about, and, and I think honestly, if I were to say anything, Tom Water's doing an amazing jobs, uh, with, with their policies and regulations that I've seen so far.
Right, um, I think that was a, a, a good concern to express. I, I know it, it sometimes seems we're just chasing, chasing the problem, which is really much larger than just the housing. It's really an economic situation all around, kind of the social and economic, um, conundrum for us where we, it's, you know, it's not just the housing, it's our, our economy and society isn't working properly. A little two cents there from, from me. Um, um, it, it seems like, you know, part of the holistic approach, I know that I'm kinda looking for is, you know, a, a little bit keying off of what Commissioner Von Halt was talking about. How do we, how do we, um, find the housing for people but not, not destroy, you know, demoralize them in the process, you know, to, so that they have a, a, a chance, if they desire to, um, to, um, build their financial equity, you know, find their job, find their, find their future, and they're not, and they're not just stuck off in someplace, somewhere. So I don't know what the answer is there, but it just seems like there's some wider problems that are part of, part of our holistic look, I hope, that we can get to. Now for other new comments, other questions, final remarks. Um, all right, well, um, thank you, Laura, that was really good. Thanks for entertaining our questions and, and commentary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope to come back again.
Yes, if you have any other questions, please send me an email.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Long, uh, let's see. Um, Brad, did you wanna, did you have any wrap-up remarks?
Uh, no, I just really appreciated Laura coming on.
Very much.
Being very willing to come on and talk with us. So I think, you know, as much as we can, if we identify the need for other kinds of things, more needed from, on the state level, what's going on, how to explain it, we can definitely ask. So please let us know if you think, as, if you're looking at the upcoming topics, what other things we could, uh, resources we could tap into for that. Um, I also wanna draw your attention to the very large document we attached as part of your packet for the, uh, preparation of your new housing element, which was just outdated and finalized as of last month. So, uh, it is detailed, uh, but, uh, just ransing through it again, uh, as we were talking here, uh, it really does cover the full gamut of everything that we need to be thinking about. So if you want a place to start, we'd suggest taking a look at that, um, and then we can go from there.
I, I didn't think this was something that I wanted to, uh, toss back at, uh, Commerce, but, you know, as I go through this, uh, list of, of barriers and how do we, uh, address the barriers, uh, the, the picture that I see is, uh, a, a single family home or even a duplex with two ADUs, uh, taking up, uh, uh, the last few square feet, uh, square feet of the lawn, and you're, we're now talking about units per, uh, parcel instead of, uh, uh, units per acre. Uh, and I see, uh, the solution to, that, that goes for all these is to get rid of the tree retention regulations. That, that appears over and over and over again. But we were worried about, uh, whether this, uh, new, uh, law that we were gonna deal with on fire was going to impact the number of trees that we could keep on a piece of property. I don't think that's, uh, anything to worry about, this is gonna take them all off. Uh, because if we, if we have to, uh, use, uh, ADUs and, um, multifamily to address the, uh, affordability of housing, uh, we're not gonna be able to, uh, follow, uh, the, the tree plan, which we haven't yet even written. We rewrote the plan, but we haven't written, we haven't written the ordinance yet or, or had it passed. And now all of a sudden, all these things are coming up, uh, that, uh, are gonna undo what we've been doing for the last two years, uh, but, you know, is it, and it's not anything Commerce is responsible for, it's the legislature responsible for it, with the twenty twenty-three, uh, uh, bill that they passed. Or basically, you know, you, 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 you fill up a yard, uh, with, uh, uh, three buildings. Not necessarily, you could fill your ADU as part of the one building, you could fill it up with one building. Uh, one building might be one story, and it might have a two-story, uh, ADU at, at each end of it. And those would, are allowed to go right to the lot line. So there, there, there's no, uh, uh, I think we're, uh, we're losing a heck of a lot in the process of, uh, if the numbers don't match up, we don't have enough, uh, potential, uh, land to, uh, build affordable housing on, and then we're gonna have to, uh, basically destroy, uh, a large por- portion of the city, uh, to meet the numbers. Uh, it, it seems to be a numbers game, uh, you know, you go down the line, you know, we can't possibly, uh, uh, address the problem with single-family housing. We can't even address it with triplexes. Uh, and it looks like the, the only way you do it is with, uh, ADUs and multifamily housing. Those seem to be the only two areas that will allow you to, uh, come up with enough units to meet, uh, and I guess, uh, the cities will work with Thurston County to find out what our share is. But, uh, I anticipate, uh, it's gonna be extremely difficult, uh, to, uh, accomplish our share.
Yeah, I acknowledge your comments. We, um, we're expecting to, uh, that we're gonna have to accommodate six thousand six hundred and seventy-six new units of housing. That's every, that's within the city.
For twenty years.
For twenty years, that's, that's our share of, of the housing, uh, that's pretty much set. How we divide that up and what that looks like in terms of the affordability groups is still being worked out. In fact, we're meeting on Friday with the other jurisdictions to round two of the discussions of how to do that calculation. Well, to Commissioner Kirkpatrick's point, uh, you, you're correct. Really, we're, the, the under eighty percent category is the one that we're really missing. So probably, and I'm just giving you a very rough number because we're still working on the overall numbers, but probably about thirty-five hundred to four thousand of those units will be under eighty, uh, which is, in, in terms of what do you do to build brand-new affordable housing, means you're looking at the higher density housing units, whether it's multifamily, tower, mid-rise, whatever, um, to try to achieve that. Um, I do acknowledge that we, you know, it, our whole purpose, uh, is to try to balance multiple things. Uh, you know, we want affordable housing in the community, that's been a goal for the council since two thousand eighteen. Uh, preserving trees has been a goal of the city since the nineteen nineties and probably farther back than that. We have a goal of protecting endangered species, uh, prairies in the city. Uh, that has to be accommodated along with everything else. So, yes, it's gonna be interesting and challenging to see how we can make all that work.
Just burning on slow steam.
Brad, coming to, to that point, I'm wondering, what is, what is the opportunity or the loc- I know you can't ma- maybe answer right today, but as we move into this, what is that opportunity for going up? The vertical capacity, you know, how high can we go before you hit, you know, seismic troubles or, uh?
I think, I think.
That kinda thing.
Uh, going up is going to be something we'll need to look at. One thing that I think is probably the bigger constraint than whatever we can throw into our zoning code in terms of height limits is what the, uh, what somebody can build and afford to build and in turn, get the, you know, whatever, return in order to pay for the building. So it's one thing to build, uh, apartments with maybe parking underneath and wood construction on five or six stories above that, that's where I think we're probably at. If you look in Lacey now, especially near, uh, Hawks Prairie, that's really kinda the model. We have a little bit of that on Tom Water Hill and the brand-new developments. We have some stuff that's sort of like that near the freeway, uh, but I think that's probably what the market can reasonably afford to build here. I don't think steel structures, we don't have them, market, that's another step up, uh, to do that. Uh, but yeah, if, if we were looking to preserve open space, preserve trees and other things, we have to look at other options, and going up is one of those options.
I liked the, um, I liked, um, Laura's remark about talking with the building community, but I also think it might be interesting to talk to some of the bigger property owners already, um, that might, you know, if they were already gonna plan for an upgrade of their grocery store or something, could they, could they put some extra layers, extra floors on top, uh, for housing? Or maybe there's other opportunities to, uh, certainly, um, in our area, we're kind of a little bit, you know, stuck with the, where our job centers are, and it would be the state we'd be talking to primarily, but, uh, you know, maybe there's some opportunity there for other, uh, to see what kinds of, um, play we have that would accommodate the numbers that we're talking about.
I think that's definitely part of the conversation. Uh, one thing that I don't think Laura touched on as much, that I think we're, we are gonna probably see a little bit more of, is conversion of existing, uh, commercial space into residential. Um, there, the, one of the, the pieces of legislation allows for, uh, that level of conversion at even a higher density than what's currently allowed under the zoning, so like an, another fifty percent, uh, and so forth. So there's, there's, I think, I do know we've had projects that have come in requesting that. Um, so I wouldn't be surprised if we see more of that.
I think about something like the Uwajamaya in Seattle, and. All the commercial down below, it's right near everything else, but, you know, I don't know how high that is, but probably at least two more layers, two more residential layers.
It's about five or six stories over, uh, over, well, there's, there's two levels of parking, the store, and then,
Yeah.
Uh, I think that's actually, um, it's also affordable housing.
Yeah, some of it, yeah.
But that's been there since the early nineties, I think.
Somewhere in there.
The nineties, anyway.
There's probably other examples too, but I, you know, it seems like that creates, um, a real center for, um, activity and culture and, um, and communities.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, and just given the amount of money I've spent there over the past. You're more than happy to bring another one down here.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, no, I think that's an excellent model. I don't know really if we're ready for that, the market is ready for that. In Seattle, that makes a lot of sense.
You would still support the.
Oh, of course.
That's right, I think too, is that, I mean, that's the International District, which is arguably, uh, I mean, I don't know, I don't have the exact data, but I would argue that's probably one of the most densely developed places in the entire state.
I don't know that we could duplicate it, or, or we should, but it's an idea that we could capitalize on for, you know, uh, that, to use as a, as a, at least an example. Who knows what we might create, somewhere near South Fugitive County Community College or somewhere close to, to, um, some of the state buildings or.
Brewery District.
Or the Brewery District, or the, or that Cleveland, um, what's it called, that little, the little.
Triangle. Yep, and that's, that's the vision in the Brewery District.
Yeah.
So I don't think, that's the good thing, we don't have a lot of change in that way. Um, in fact, and, and we don't have maximum densities.
Yeah.
In some of our zoning districts, so.
That would sort of leave alone a lot of the, um, areas that currently ha- are, have some trees on their property, you know.
Well, that's where we.
You don't, you don't change the, uh, the impervious.
The i- the idea was to have more trees in those, this advantage areas of town.
Right, right.
That was one of the specific goals, and now we, you know.
Well, we need to figure out how to make it work in a smaller area. It's, it's possible, it's just gonna be a little harder.
Yeah, rooftop gardens or what have you, but if, if you can't have trees, at least some other, some other, uh, uh, livable condition.
Yeah, well, you have to look for the recreational space for everybody living there and where they're gonna go and do all that. That can't be forgotten. Uh, for the next meeting, we will be touching on a lot of the stuff in the development code that, that Laura started to go through, uh, but we'll sort of give you a rundown of all those requirements and how they're gonna apply to us, so.
Um, let's see, I, are there other comments, remarks? Motion? Commissioner Tobias.
I move we adjourn.
Great, thank you. Second, Commissioner Edwards, um, final discussion. All right, it's been moved and seconded that we adjourn our meeting tonight, a very good one, I might add. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, any opposed?
Really helpful, yeah.
All righty, um, we are adjourned, thanks everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, so, uh, more importantly, when do we are gonna see the pictures?
Right, I'll be, I'll be a slideshow.